Good morning. I'm a little shorter. Good morning. It is Wednesday, February 26th, and I will call this committee of the whole meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Yes.
Craymeyer.
Here.
Mortensen.
Here.
We have a quorum. So we are going to have one change to the agenda today. There are some further developments with the TIF proposal. So we're going to move that off of today's agenda and get some further direction before we bring this back to council. The first item of business this morning is the community festivals. So we are going to invite Mr. Len up to the podium.
Morning. Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair and council members. Get to talk about some of the fun things that happened in Fergus Falls. We are a part of three community celebrations throughout the year. Summerfest, Shot, Move and Groove, and Over the River. And state statute does allow a city to participate in the cost of community celebrations. And so we've done this typically at the first meeting of the year to declare these celebrations as a community celebration. And Mayor Hicks had asked that we go back and look at what the costs for each event are. So we've done that, and the information is in your packet for which, for the cost for each of the events. So this morning, just seeking a resolution, asking that these celebrations be declared community celebrations and that it be a continuing or perpetual resolution so that each year we don't have to come back and go through this piece of business until you ask for a review, I guess, of course. But just seeking that perpetual resolution for our community celebrations.
We, and it's three that we have, correct? It's Shot, Move and Groove.
Summerfest.
Summerfest and Over the River. Okay, thank you. Would anyone care to make a motion to?
I'll offer that.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Al. Let's open this up for discussion.
Madam Chairperson, are the city labor costs, I would assume specifically for Summerfest, is there overtime included in that? Or is that labor costs that would be probably being done on some other project? Or is this an additional expenditure for the labor costs?
There is no overtime involved unless there's something that happens with the electrical system or plumbing systems after the events start. But it's all labor that's within a 40-hour work week typically.
Any additional questions, comments? All in favor? Oh, sorry. Scott, did you have a question?
No, I was just going to say aye.
Oh. I'm going to let you start that then. All in favor, say aye.
I'm sure, give me one second. One check, one second, Madam Chair. So you're looking for perpetual, so just boom, boom, boom. It keeps going every year. You don't have to come in front. But are we looking at letting the city council at least know the costs that they were the year before so they can look at this, so this thing doesn't get out of control for us? And I'm not saying it will, but let's say it's $20,000 now and next 30, 40, 50, 60. I just would like to see the council know beforehand every year that, hey, this was the cost for those events. And then I don't have an issue with the perpetual. But there has to be some check and balance to where the council can at least say, whoa, this is getting very expensive for the city. Is that something we can do, Len?
Yes, for sure. We can give you that annual review.
We would have the ability to, if we wanted to in the future, to put a cap on what the city is going to spend on an event like this, correct?
Yes.
I don't know if this is where it's going to fit in. I had a call of a fourth ward resident a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago. And what he was requesting and what he was talking about to me, and I think he reached out to some other council members too, was that since we are celebrating our 250th year on July 4th this year as a nation, he really would like to see fireworks on the 4th of July. At least I wanted to bring it up for him and to bring it up to the council to visit about. I don't know if this is the appropriate time or not, but we're talking about these types of things. And that's why I thought I'll do it instead of new business. So, you know, as far as funding it, that we'd have to look into that or see what would have to happen on that. But he thought that was a pretty important date in the milestone of our nation is 250 years. And that was his request.
And Len, you, and maybe someone from the Summerfest can speak more to this, but you've set aside about $3,500, I think, for fireworks. Is that right, for the Summerfest program?
For Summerfest, you're right, yes. $3,500 we've been giving towards fireworks for that event and $1,500 for the Over the River.
Over the River, okay. I guess one of the questions I'd have for the Summerfest, then, if we've got a constituent that's talking about maybe the 250th anniversary fireworks on the 4th of July, which I don't know if that's something that the city will have an appetite for. Is the fireworks for the Summerfest something that really is a draw for the Summerfest? Or is it something that's just kind of an add-on thing at the end, I guess? So, so we know, because if the council goes down with the 250th, fireworks would be kind of doubled up.
Yeah, I agree. I can't speak for them for sure, but I think it is a draw. In my opinion.
Okay.
Yeah, another thing, this year's interesting in the fact that July 4th falls on Friday. And so I know the racetrack, they typically do the Friday closest to the 4th, and they've already been in contact with the city about potentially sponsoring something out there on the 4th of July. So whether that would.
That'd be great, yeah.
With no, with no gate admission, right?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, with, with that part of the event not having.
My understanding is they stop where they're at in the races at that point in time, and then it's open to anybody to come in and witness or participate. And then they could stay for the finishing of the races or whatever. So I think there is something in the works. But if, if the council wanted to go in a direction that was different than the racetrack, we can certainly have that discussion.
I think maybe the timing would work out perfect that way, so, yeah. And I can, I can reach out to him, let him know. And, you know, I agree too that, you know, the fireworks are a draw for Summerfest. You know, it's a great location. Everything works out well. And I commend all those who are in the Summerfest camp.
Yeah, it's a big effort.
Yeah.
A lot of work.
Yes, Mr. Leighton.
In regards to Summerfest, the fireworks, is the city the only contributor to the fireworks? And who's shooting them?
It's a licensed pyrotechnic contractor. I don't recall his name.
Okay, I understand.
Ryan doesn't either.
Well, I understand. I'm looking at the liability side of this thing. This insurance policy that the city has, the fireworks endorsement. I'm trying to figure out who's, who's sponsoring this thing. And if the city's sponsoring it, we need to have that, that exposure picked up.
Summerfest has event insurance, so their insurance covers all activities during that event. The contractor does have his own insurance that is required to put on the application form, and you guys approve that application, the permit.
Mark, the contract for the fireworks is with Summerfest, and then they seek reimbursement from the city. And the $3,500 does not cover the full cost. So it's just a contribution towards it.
Okay, thank you. Is that the same thing with Over the River?
Yes.
Okay. As long as the city's not, if you will, the endorser or the provider, I'm comfortable.
All right. Yep. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. This item will be added to the March 3rd agenda. Would you like this item added to the consent agenda?
I would say yes, Your Honor.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the creation of a joint powers board for public transportation. We'd like to invite Kayla Sullivan from the Otter Express and John Grotheus from Minnesota DOT to provide more information.
Yes, thank you, council members and city staff for allowing us to present today. Can you hear me okay? I'm short. So we're here to present an exciting opportunity for the public transit system here in Fergus and in Otter Tail County and Welkin County and part of Clay County. We are at a point of creating, excuse me, a joint powers board, and we would love you to be a partner with us in that venture. I'll give you just a little bit of background, and hopefully you guys all got this little pamphlet with a little bit of data on it, and I'll just kind of highlight a few things, and then we welcome any questions. So I'm going to just go back one year to 2024, where we had a total of about 64,000 rides in all of our service areas. In Fergus, we had just shy of 50,000 rides. So in Fergus Falls itself, by far exceeds any other service area that we provide service in. We employ 25 staff altogether. Our financial information, in 2024, we had an operation, operating budget, excuse me, of $2.419 million. At that time, it was a local share of 5%. We had additional income, which helps, helps with the local share amount. So any bus fares and less advertising, things like that. So that's what that almost $250,000 number is. And our top three in expenses are about $1.8 million annually. In 2026, some projected numbers are the potential local share. From what we've been hearing, it's, it's at the Minnesota State Legislature right now. All the rumors right now is that it's going to be at 10%. It can go as high as 15%. So we're very hopeful that it's just going to stay at 10% right now. We have a couple of future local share projects, which would not be until 2027. So there's a little bit of that upcoming. We have quite a bit of future ride opportunities where the service could be greatly expanded. We could get a lot more riders on public transit. That's the whole meaning behind public transit. It's for anybody and everybody. So we have a lot of opportunities to expand our service too. And you can read all those there. So what we're coming to you is a request to be a partner with us in a joint powers board. This is under Minnesota State Statute, for those of you that are not aware of that. We need just a bare minimum of two governmental agencies to say yes to us. So I'm going in front of four different ones right now with the hope of at least two. We'd love everybody to be involved. And the main really objective behind this joint powers board is to have local control. You guys would help, you'd essentially be by board of directors, so you can help make all the operational decisions. Do you want to add anything specifically, John, to all this?
So as, as it says, my name's John Grotheus. I'm the project manager for MINDOT, the Office of Transit and Active Transportation. I am, I manage 16 counties in west central Minnesota. All of those, except for Otter Express here, have our joint powers board. So I'm very familiar with this government structure. If that compare populations in the, in these same areas, communities of similar size, I think we could see, I do believe that you could see some growth in your ridership. I see more flexibility, providing more of a general public type of service that I see. And hopefully, we could get more partners involved and have even, in this area, not just in Fergus, but in this area, have more access to transportation.
Thank you.
Kayla, what's your, what's your focus? What's your image? Is it? You know, what's your focus point of it?
Mark, can I pause you just for a second? Can?
Me.
Thank you. Would anybody care to make a motion to bring this item to the March 3rd?
I can do that.
Mark, would you be willing to second that?
Sure.
Thank you. Now, go ahead.
I forgot what I was going to say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What's the vision for the services in Fergus Falls, Otter Tail County?
In Otter Tail County as a whole, I feel that we can expand greatly. We just, as in 2025, expanded to Battle Lake and Pelican Rapids. And there's opportunity to service a lot more of Otter Tail County. So we would just love to be partners with you guys in the hopes of expanding even in Fergus. That could entail expanding our hours, expanding our days. Another note I should probably say is that anytime we say no to somebody, we have to track that. So we're tracking the demand. So we have a, quite an extensive spreadsheet of the demand currently, so.
I think in other communities I've been involved with, and they have this type of service, my image is if there would be a route, a standard route. Fergus is now spread out a little bit because of the various parks that we have. I mean, we've got D Lagoon, we've got the golf course, we've got now the swimming pool, Aqua Center, Splash Pad. I image, I look at a, at a daily route, if you will. Number two, a little bit more like, you know, an Uber where an elderly person, you know, just ran out of flour and we're breaking, making bread. We, I need to run to the grocery store. Historically, too, if we have less privileged individuals who need to work out of town, those kinds of rides. And then how far would you reach out if I needed a ride wherever? I mean, could I get a ride to Battle Lake?
So currently, right now, we're, what, our system is set up as a demand response service. So we don't have, what you first said, any fixed route. Meaning every Monday at 8:00 AM, we're going to go from point A to point B. So you just show up at point A. We don't have that service. And the reason behind that right now is that everybody needs to get to point A. And in our local community, that is the struggle right now. They don't have any transportation. How are they going to get to point A to get to that regular service? So we have stuck so far, not that we can't revisit that, we can. But we have stuck so far with a demand response. You call me, Mark, and say, hey, Kayla, I need to go get my haircut. And next Thursday at 10:00 AM, we look in our schedule, okay, yep, we'll get you there and we'll get you home. That's basically how it works right now. But like I said, not that we can't revisit a fixed route system in the future, too. Your other point was, right now, we go up to 12 miles. So to Battle Lake, no. In the past, before COVID, we had what we call commuter routes. So we had a Highway 210, which was Henning to Fergus. We had I-94, which was Fergus to Fargo-Moorhead. And then we had a Highway 10, somewhere up by Holly, to Fargo-Moorhead, too. So again, like, we just tracked demand for those. Could that come back again now or soon? It could, yes.
Please.
Yeah, I think the goal here, too, would be with the joint powers board, you would have more control over your, your routes. So a voice from this council, you know, one or two members participating on the board could be more active in making those types of decisions. And then I think we've seen some trends with smaller vehicles. We've seen some trends with more of the types of demand that you're talking about. You know, so those are possibilities, I think, as we do move forward. I mean, I know the miles get a little tricky sometimes. But as far as providing, and then you asked about a successful vision. You know, I think if I look at successful transit agencies that I work with, they have, they have a broad range of, you know, youth, after-school type programs. They also have seniors, people who live, get out of their homes for shopping and those types of things. So not just one focused group of passengers, but a broad range of constituents that work in the system.
Yeah, look at the new D Lagoon. Let's say I ride my bicycle out there. I'm, you know, 15 years old. I go out there and I play all day long, and I, let's just say, on the hour, every hour, a bus was out there, and at the end of the day, I'm, you know, the kids are wet. They've been swimming all day, they're tired, and I don't want to ride my bicycle home. I'm looking at something as simple as that. But again, I appreciate, you know, the seniors and all the other individuals that may need a ride. Thank you for your input.
Kayla, I appreciate your time being here, and I appreciate your dedication to Otter Express and making this a success, not only for Fergus Falls, but the area. The thing that, I want to reel back just a little bit, because we've got 64,000 riders here in 2024, and some of them are probably watching us today. Some of them are maybe concerned of why you're coming in front of us today for their ride. Can you just take us a little context of where this got to this? You don't have to go in depth. But I also want the public to know that if we don't go for this today, we don't want to be a part of the joint powers, that you will still be a good entity in this community. So can you give us a little context to how this came to today?
Yep. So since 2006, Productive Alternatives, that's based here in Fergus, was approached to be the public transit provider. And John actually maybe can speak a little bit more to that. But, so it's been with Productive Alternatives since that time. The beginning of this month, February 2025, Productive Alternatives had a board meeting, and the board decided not to continue with public transportation. So that's kind of how I got to this point of creating a joint powers board. That is my goal, in the hopes that out of the four of you, two of you will say yes. So we can just continue on as is, and it won't be an impact to any of our riders.
Also, too, I think, John, you had a comment, and I can't remember, I think it was you, about this is the only type of this program that you know of that's structured like this. I guess, what's, what's the difference?
Well, in my region that I work with, in other, there are, across the state, there are other versions. There is still city, there still are cities. City Morris has a transit system. Becker County has a standalone transit system. Currently, Productive Alternatives is a nonprofit that operates. But the systems that I work with, I have three other, I have a three, two, three counties and one six-county joint powers board that I work with. And my experience is, and then cap agencies also around the state have transit systems. But in the region that I work with, I have three joint powers board, and they have, they have been very productive, very effective in how they operate their system.
Laurel?
Couple of questions, kind of echoing what Councilmember Leighton said. And when I was running for city council, it was clear to me that we have somewhat of an unreliable taxi cab system in the city of Fergus, and that on-demand need is something I heard about. I just, from my perspective, that would probably be something that I would encourage the joint boards to look at, because there is a need for a medical appointment that came up or something where a car fails and they can't get to work that morning, and it's hard to get an appointment, because you are busy, which is, I mean, everyone is grateful for that. But I do think that on-demand piece would be important for our constituents.
Yeah, and I could speak a little bit to that, too. So we do accommodate same-day rides. So if.
When possible, yeah.
Whatever, your car broke down right now and you need to go to work, as long as we have that time free and a bus free, we do accommodate those. And we actually do quite a bit of same-day rides.
Okay. And I don't know, people just don't understand that, because a lot of times, they maybe, you know, you make ahead of time, too. And so I just don't know if people understand that, and maybe that's a public information piece.
Right, yeah. It is challenging to get the word out and get all our policies out to all the communities. But yes, I agree.
Kayla, I don't want to get, I don't want to get ahead of us and talk about rides and routes and different things like that. I need to know exactly what, because I want to support you and I want to support this project. I want to know exactly what you're looking for today. Just the, the brunt part is just to have us as one of your entities of the board? Is that, that's where it's at?
Yeah, we would like, obviously, sooner rather than later, like a yes, we want to continue with this and support you and be a part of the board? Or just, no, we do not want to be part of the board, so we can plan other things?
Okay. How big a board will this be? Nine-member, eight-member? What are you thinking?
It's kind of however we create the joint powers board structure. I know John can speak more than this, but I've talked to a few others, and I know one has two counties and there's five members from each. But I think it's just all set up differently, and maybe you can add.
And so Rainbow Rider to the South has six counties, two county commissioners each. They have no cities involved. So that's typical, two members from a contributing member would be something of that nature. It could be one to two. And then we would also expect an advisory committee also with, with input from consumers and local businesses, maybe.
Yeah. I, I think with the amount of riders we have in Fergus Falls, which is near 50,000 out of your 64,000 last year, that I believe, I hope my council member colleagues will support being part of this. I think this is something we have to be part of. But I want it, I want it to be where the mayor decides on who it is, whether it's a council member or it's a mayor, and, and not city staff.
I may just address that, yes. I think we would expect elected officials to be on that governing board. And then the advisory committee would maybe have staff or something of that nature. Thank you.
I think this is a good thing for our community, and I appreciate you bringing it to us, that this thing didn't fall through the cracks and this thing fell apart. I, I'm glad that it's here, and I hope we support it.
Yeah, and thank you, Mike, for saying that, too. And I just wanted to just add one more thing. And Fergus Falls locally, we provide transportation to 46 different employers, whether it's to and from or one or the other. So it's very important to get these people to work, too, that have no other option.
Generally, I'd say that having a voice at the table is a good thing, and having the opportunity to join this board is probably in our best interest to do that. So I would speak in favor of the motion for that reason. The potential costs and how that might change or be different than what we've done in the past. I know that we provided some funding to Productive Alternatives for this purpose in the past. And whether that changes, up, goes up, down, whatever, how that would be affected, at this point, we really don't know. And I don't imagine that you can even answer that question until this board gets it figured out. So at, at this point, I would support forming or going, joining with this so that you can keep the process moving. And then if it looks down the road like something that, man, we don't want to spend whatever, you know, then we'll have the opportunity at those times to, you know, opt in or out, I would assume.
Yep, yeah. Well, thank you for that, Scott.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Who owns the current vehicles?
Productive Alternatives owns the vehicles.
Would it be unwise for me to ask what's going to happen to those vehicles if they no longer want to be involved with this event?
Well, we would, we would, I guess, I would expect that they would be transferred into the new system.
Okay.
Your Honor, I have one question. Do these joint powers boards have taxing, or levying abilities? In your district, any?
I believe, that's a really good question. I believe they, they do, but they do not exert, they do not utilize that. They don't use that.
The intent of this would not be to create a special.
That is correct.
On the entities involved.
This would not be designed to be a taxing authority at all. It's a way to, so, so the employees would be, you know, it would be a government entity. So the employees would be a joint powers board employee. They would not be a city employee or a county employee. And, but the nice thing about the joint powers board, they can use the tort liability. They can, they, they can use the, either the League of Cities or the County's Trust to do their insurances. So there's some real good advantages. The employees then would be eligible for PERA and retirement, some of those stuff. So it's a, it's, it is a very positive move, so thank you.
Thank you. We're going to call for the vote on this one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And this item will be added to the March 3rd agenda. Can we add this to the consent agenda?
I would say.
Yep.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, as last year the council requested to review the public art selections before they are installed in the Sculpture Walk. We'd like to invite Naomi Schleisman, the Art Walk Manager, to provide more information. And Clara.
I'm just going to talk really quickly, just to provide some background context, but also to say I'm super excited that we're at this point, and thank you, Naomi, for getting us there. I'm just going to remind you guys that this program is entirely grant-funded. We are working with the Vidin Trust and with Lake Region Arts Council to provide all of the funding for our downtown Sculpture Walk that should be going live this spring. So now that it's starting to get warm out, we can kind of picture what it's going to look like. But entirely grant-funded, and it's being managed by our Public Arts Commission, who've done an excellent job on getting the word out about the process. who've done an excellent job on getting the word out about the process and doing the review of all of the sculptures that have come in. And I'm going to invite Naomi up. She has been acting as our project manager and we are thrilled to have her.
Thank you, Clara. Good morning, council members and Madam Job as well. Thank you for letting me be here today. I am excited and thrilled to share with you all the actual six sculptures that were chosen. And to give you some background is that we did start the call for this back in January 7th. It was a call throughout the tri-state, the tri-states of Minnesota, North Dakota and South Dakota. I did get a request for when we do this call again next year, that they would love to have Wisconsin included. This call went out in the Daily Journal as well for the press release, but as well, it was broadcasted in South Dakota through the South Dakota Arts Council, the North Dakota Arts Council, and also in Minnesota here. We have many people who have applied. We got a total of 17 artists and over 30 pieces that we had to go through. And this is a small number of pieces because actually these calls go out earlier in the fall. And so next year, in the timeline that I provided with you, we would be starting the call in early August and then making the decision in September of this year for the following 2026 year. I am elated that Michael Finch, who you can see on the first one, which is titled Guardian, applied from Afton, Minnesota. Timothy Cassidy, who applied with Industry III, applied from New York Mills, Minnesota. Tim Nelson, which is titled Riverdale, applied from Bemidji, Minnesota. John Camrith, who is also very familiar here in Fergus Falls, but lives in Manadi, Minnesota, applied with House Tree. Kyle Folken, applied with Junk Ship from Minneapolis, Minnesota. And also our own artist Blaze Buseth, who's actually over in India right now, studying bronze casting, applied with his piece as well about Tom's Playful Melody. These six pieces were chosen from myself, knowing as being a public artist myself, I am trained in woodworking and welding and also have my own public artwork. And if you know the bicycle sculptural racks that are placed around Fergus Falls, the butterfly racks and the prairie grass are actually part of the team that I work with, Carl Zachman. And so I was really excited to see these possible new additions that could be added into the Sculpture Walk. And that's where we are coming to you today to ask for approval for these six sculpture pieces to be installed downtown Fergus Falls in between Lincoln and Cascade. And that our hope is, is that it's going to draw attention from all generations. And as you can see, that we had some playful pieces and also some more traditional sculpture pieces within the applications that were chosen. If any of you have any questions, I would love to open that up at this time.
Thank you, Naomi. Can we get a motion on the floor here? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Laurel. Go ahead, Scott.
Naomi, on the placements, is there any type of signage or identifying plaque that has anything to, you know, provide information either about the artist or about the piece?
Yes, there is going to be actual, we are going to have brass plaques made that will be able to slide in the information. It'll have the artist, the title of the piece, also the dimensions of the piece, and then it'll also have the cost of what that sculpture piece is. Because these pieces will be for sale and that there is also a commission that the city will receive if any of the sculpture pieces do sell. And on that plaque, then it will be attached onto the limestone. And I traveled to Hutchinson, Minnesota, Rochester, Minnesota, and Red Wing, Minnesota in December to physically go and look at their sculpture walks that they had and to see how they had their limestone pedestal set up as well and also how they had different displays of plaques. And that's where I was really impressed by Red Wing, who's had their Sculpture Art Walk up for many years. They have the bronze plaques and that is where I will be working with Tag Up to get those made locally here in Fergus Falls. And so each year then, as we rotate out the sculptures, the plaques that will be able to slide into that holder will then again have the new names of the new artists in the sculpture pieces as well. And there will be a QR code on those plaques that people will be able to scan so that it will take them to the actual website where we'll have images uploaded, the artist's bio and also artist statement, and then a picture of it, too. And that's where I'll be working with Rolando at Visit Fergus Falls, where we'll be creating a actual map of downtown so that people can have a physical brochure of that, but then we'll also have it online as well.
Naomi, I'm going to hit you with a couple of questions here. First off, I'm glad there's people like you that do art because if they relied on me to do it, it wouldn't get done. So I appreciate that for the community. It's another side of it that's different than what I do. Do you know exactly where these are going to be placed? Are they going to be all downtown or exactly where they're going to be at?
That's a great question. And that is where Guy and I, we're going to get together and we were going to talk about where the placements were going to be exactly, but we had that big storm. And so we were not able to physically go and do that. And so Guy and I are going to be getting together and we're going to be placing those in between Lincoln and Cascade. And that's where we're going to try to make it so that it is compliant as well for everything that the city needs to be making sure that when they're cleaning off the sidewalks, they are out of the way. And that's one thing that I've already worked with Public Works on with installing our prairie grass and butterflies. Also with my train and a nonprofit, I understand the importance of that and that's where Guy and I will be making the decisions that'll be best for Public Works and also for the sculpture pieces to be accessible for people to see.
Good, good. I appreciate that. One of the other things I was reading through, is this a three-year deal?
Yes.
Yeah, this is not just the one year, it's a three-year deal. So this is going to come back '25, '26, '27, so the community knows that. The other thing you said today that I didn't realize, you said something about the city getting a commission?
Yes, that is actually in the proposal that was brought up in the budget earlier this fall. That is where if any, so it is not guaranteed that the sculpture pieces will sell, but if they do, that's where we're having this be as like a public art gallery so that it's accessible outside and also to have it be walkable, but then also to have something to draw people downtown for the local businesses. In South Dakota, this has been a huge success for them and that is where artists have sold their artwork, also in Hutchinson. Those art pieces do need to stay in place until the next fiscal year when we put in the new sculptures. And so that everyone understands the sculptures will be welded down, that is one of the requirements for the sculpture pieces. And then when we're ready to remove them and if they sell, then the person who has purchased that piece would be able to come and pick up the piece here in Fergus Falls.
Okay, good. Appreciate it. I'd love, you know what I'd love sometime, and this is off-topic and I'll stop, but I'd love to be able to work with you sometime and with the city staff and with us to get some permanent structures, like in front of the police department of a bronze statue of a police officer, in front of the fire department, a bronze statue of that, military in our park. I'd love to be able to do something like that with you in the future that's more permanent, that would honor our servants in this community if we could.
And I actually know of a bronze casting business that is in southern Minnesota and that is what he does for a living and travels throughout the United States creating those pieces.
Good discussion for another day.
Yes.
Also, too, I just want to make a comment to Naomi. Thanks for all your work. We've had discussions in the past about different things. Being a former member of the Center for the Arts Board, this is very important. And, you know, art, I believe, appeals to all, even Mike, since he is artistic, he says. I'm just kidding. I think it's very important and I think, you know, we need, I'll call it some city pizzazz. Let's put it that way, okay? I don't know if I want to use that term or not, but I just want to thank you once again. And that studio in southern Minnesota, I use that one also. So I know exactly who you're talking about.
You know who I'm talking about, yeah.
So, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Clara, did you have something you were going to add?
I just, I wanted to respond a little bit to the commission question. So just to clarify where the commission, so it would be, it would be like we are a gallery essentially, so the city would keep, I think we had like a 20, do we have a 20% commission? Is that what? Is that what? I believe it's, yeah, it's 20. So 20% of the sale price would come back to the city with the intent that it would go into the Sculpture Walk program itself to continue that on beyond the three years that our grant funding is supporting.
That was what I was going to bring up. Is it, my understanding was that was the goal. Was it any money that it would generate would go toward the costs beyond the three-year window of the grant funding?
Yeah, we would love for this to be a self-supporting program if possible.
And that is what has happened in other communities as well, of them starting up the Sculpture Walk programs and then with the commissions that has happened from those sales has gone back into those monies for that program to sustain it as well.
Your Honor, the pedestals, do they have a life expectancy or like limestone should last a long time? And are we comfortable with the sizes of the pedestals for this year's so that they'll work for future art? Because there's a range in sizes and pedestals here.
That's a really great question. And that is where Fergus Falls Monument has been the one that we've worked with on this to get the correct limestone that we need so it'll last for many years. And it actually matches the current limestone that is in the riverfront and also the splash pad. So it'll be a continuum going downtown so that it looks cohesive and then we can add a little bit of that jazz or pizzazz with the colors of the sculptures and everything in place. And so I think also too, with asking about those pedestals, those are sizes that other Sculpture Walk communities have been using. And so those are standard sizes then, and so other artists who have applied to other Sculpture Walks, we know that their pieces will be fitting on those pieces.
Good work, thank you.
All right.
Laura?
Yes.
Thank you. Mike and I are kind of art-blind. I've talked to Lynn in the past over the years about snow removal and I'm very concerned that these are not in the way in the winter, right up against the curb. I would prefer to see them a little closer to the buildings. As the snow gets piled up off Main Street and the local businesses are trying to push the snow back into the, into the street, we have a berm there that, you know, when you go downtown to shop, you can't open your door or if you're elderly, you can't even walk over the snow. So for snow removal, if you would take that into consideration, that would be very nice. Who is the City of Fergus Falls Public Arts Commission?
Do you want me to speak to that or who?
Yeah, Your Honor, Councilman Layton, the Public Arts Commission is one of our boards and commissions in city code and it's one of the commissions that on an annual basis, the mayor makes recommendations for appointment and the council approves. So I think you guys did that in January. So it would be similar to our parking rec board, planning commission, that type of thing. That advises the city council on art matters in the city.
So the city now will own these pieces?
No, no, they will not own these pieces. These pieces are coming to us to be on display and then they will be for sale for that full year period that they are downtown on those pedestals. And this is a program that is used throughout multiple Sculpture Walk programs and that's where we've been working close with Hutchinson and also I've been working close with Sioux Falls for about two years now, understanding how that all works. And that is where the city will not own those pieces. This is a rotating exhibition that is outside where each year we will get new pieces put in place.
Did I read this wrong, then? It says the commission voted to take on the ownership of the Sculpture Walk? But that's not the sculptures.
No, it's the ownership of actually having this program and then also hiring me as the one to manage it. And I'd love to say that I actually served on the Public Arts Commission for 10 years through Springboard for the Arts and then also as a citizen of Fergus Falls. And I really believe in this commission and what they've been doing and bringing to our community for the arts.
The reason for the question is who owned the art? Who should insure the art in the event a plow hits it, a car hits it, someone vandalizes it? I read that incorrectly, assuming that the actual piece was being owned by the commission and then the city. But if that's not the case, I'm happy.
On our terms and conditions, actually on the site of the Fergus Falls City site, that they will have to sign a contract, the artists are required to insure their own work. That is one way of us being public artists. We have to make sure that we insure our own work so that if anything does happen, then we take that insurance out to protect our work.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Yep.
Can I speak to the snow removal question?
Yes, yep.
It's a good point and we're concerned about that, too. So we are going to work together on placement. The city's obligation for snow removal between Union and Cascade on Lincoln is we do two widths of our snow removal equipment from the building fronts out and then it's the responsibility of the business owners then to take it from that point to the curb. So that ridge that gets built up, it's there for a day or two until we're able to get downtown after a plowing operation and then remove that snow and haul it away. We are going to work on the location so we get that sweet spot. So it's in the range outside of the building from where we plow or sweep or whatever.
Yep.
And in from the curb where our motor grader won't snag.
Well, Main Street's very busy if you were to pull up and park. I mean, and I'm not saying just art, signs and what have you. So when you open up your door, you've got to kind of structure your parking so that you can get out of your vehicle. So that's my concern. Thank you very much for your time and I appreciate your dedication. It is nice.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have a motion on the floor to bring this to council on March 3rd. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. This item will be added to the March 3rd agenda and can we add this to the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is a request for an easement from Otter Tail Power and we have Nate Cundy with us today.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to give you a little overview of a short presentation, hopefully. Actually has two parts. The first part is going to be our main focus is going to be the easement portion of kind of what we need to take our next step. Second portion is going to talk a little bit about opportunity to replace some old municipal lighting with the tariff options that we've been doing in different phases throughout the community, basically in conjunction with this project. So a little background, we're investing pretty heavily into our distribution network in Fergus Falls. This is kind of one phase of it that is going to impact some city parking lots and have a pretty drastic visible change to our downtown corridor. So Lynn, if you would, please. Just a little background, our company, we have some core values, one of them being community, the other one being safety. This project really hits on both of those. The goal here is to really improve our grid reliability with that becomes an increase to public safety by moving our overhead facilities into underground facilities, eliminating pole backing incidents, just general structures that seem to always kind of be magnets to cars. The other piece of that is definitely the community aspect of it. We're a community-minded company. We continue to invest in our community. If we weren't bonded here, we wouldn't be sticking the millions of dollars into the distribution system that we are today. So next slide, please. What we're doing is the alleyway behind Lincoln Avenue on the north side in between Union and actually extending past Cascade is an existing overhead line. We're going to be burying that in that alley corridor. You can see from the pictures here, a lot of this stuff is just not up to today's standards of what we would build. A lot of overhead lines going actually to the businesses. We have, you might see these eight structures, we call them platform structures, there're power banks on there. It's actually kind of a unsafe build for our linemen and our field workers to actually go up on this stuff and actually work on it. So what we've done is we've had a pre-construction meeting with the joint utilities that are attached here and we're all going to work together to bury not only the power but the telecom and replace an old PVC gas line that Great Plains has running through there as well. Next slide, please. So some more pictures just to kind of put some things in context when we're talking about easement placement and why we're doing the project. You can see You can see from the pictures, these things are just not placed, you know, where they probably should be. Were probably built long before the alley and the parking lots were there and probably even some of the buildings. So, next slide, please. What we're doing is we're targeting a construction start date of May 15th. This is something that we're gonna have to coordinate with the city a little bit on. But ideally, what we'd like to do is have the asphalt milled the entire alley width. If you take a drive down there and take a look at the asphalt condition, it's pretty poor. Our standard would be to basically cut a three-foot chunk of asphalt out, do our excavation, backfill, and then patch in three feet of asphalt. But the condition that this alleyway is in, it just doesn't make sense to spend that money and do it. So we've engaged in a bid just to kind of see what the cost was gonna be. And we took that to the joint utilities that are gonna participate in this project. Yesterday, we had one dropout that was Lumen or Century Link, or is not gonna participate in the project because they don't have anybody being served off of this corridor. So they're actually just gonna remove their facilities altogether. But initially, the other four joint utilities on this project agreed to participate in a cost share. We would, the fifth would be the City of Fergus Falls to basically get that mill and overlay done on the alleyway. So just high level, we're probably looking in the neighborhood of 20 to 25,000 between the five, five of us just to do the asphalt reclamation. So it's a really good opportunity that the utilities are willing to put up a, you know, a fifth of that money if the city's willing to contribute as well to get the entire alleyway repaved rather than just the three-foot chunk that we would require. Again, targeting that for May 15th. So we're hoping that we can expedite the easement process, keep the project flowing, keep all the joint utilities in conjunction with one another and the, and the city to be able to accommodate our timeline. But kind of what we're gonna be doing is, Great Plains is gonna come in before the rest of our contractor work comes in. They have to use a certified contractor for natural gas replacement. They have some concerns about the PVC line being worked around and excavated around. So they felt more comfortable having their crews do their work prior to us coming in and doing all the crossings, which I don't blame them. If you've worked on PVC gas line, it's incredibly brittle. So after the asphalt gets done, Great Plains is gonna come in and we're gonna work block to block to block. We're gonna be right on the heels of them doing the electric and all the telecom work. Max Extraction is gonna be our contractor that's gonna be doing our excavation and our installations. They've worked with us for a number of years now, several projects in town. They have a sterling reputation and do an excellent job in the cleanup aspect of it. So our, our construction method is we will be excavating about a three-foot wide trench. It's gonna be about four feet deep on average. And the reason we're going open trenching is because we ran into issues when we did the south side of Lincoln on cobble and backfill and actually wrecked quite a bit of boring equipment and it got very costly. So not knowing what has been backfilled in that alley and old foundations, it's just, it's more conducive to construction to be able to open trench this. We will be boring the street crossings though, so Cascade, Court, Mill, Union, no obstruction to traffic. We are gonna bore those roadways. So just a general overview of the project, we have actually two different circuits going in on here. The one up on Kavor is actually gonna be our heavy feeder project. Not that that means anything to you, but basically it's gonna be a continuous line from a junction box that I'll show you. And it'll go all the way back to a pole kind of by Bu Street. The stuff that's in the alleyway is that gonna be our, kind of the distribution feed. That's what's gonna pop in and out of our transformers, which is why I'm here to talk about easement because we need a spot to put our transformers rather than have them on these eight structures hovering over the alleyway. So the red lines and the, are everything that's going in for underground wires. The little white boxes are actually our transformer locations. And you can kind of see, we've tried to cluster these to basically minimize the amount of easement that we need and make less of an impact to any traffic areas. So next slide, Lynn. You can kind of see on the tail end of Cascade how we cross the railroad tracks and where we end up. But that's kind of our project scope here. Next slide, please. So the first easement here is gonna be on the block behind the Center for the Arts Building. So right here, we have a cluster of five transformers. You can kind of see right now, we have one, one of the poles in this eight structure. There's some dead zone here from just how the parking is configured. We'll actually end up taking probably a little bit of this parking spot out of the way to get this cluster of transformers in here. Next one, please. We go a block to the east and we actually have three easement locations. One is in the corner, right behind Bank of the West, just one transformer going there. We go to the middle row of parking, there's actually a bank of three transformers there. And then right here on the end, basically paralleling the sidewalk, there's actually a tree with some landscaping here. This is where that junction box is gonna go. So remember I talked about that main feeder that kind of runs along Kavor? That'll be directional board, by the way, so no impact to city facilities or open excavation there. Next slide, please. So this is where the transformer locations would go on the block to the east. So right here would be that initial single-phase transformer. Kind of, you can kind of see again, just general facilities that seem to always be in the way of parking. And this is actually behind Olson Furniture. So they have delivery trucks coming in and out of there. I'm sure that they will high-five every one of you to say, get this out of here. But that bank of three transformers, this is one's gonna impact the parking the most. We're gonna end up taking up two parking spaces back here to get that bank of three transformers in. And this is that other easement area that we'll end up putting a junction box kind of right in that landscaping. Go ahead, please. So what our bank of transformers look like, similar to what's on the south side of Lincoln. This is actually by the federal building, by the splash pad. This is kind of what you can envision being at these easement locations. The, the bank of five will actually have three of these large three-phase pad mount transformers and two single phases on the north side. The bank of three will just have three of these large three-phase pad mount transformers all in a row. Okay, we'll back up there one more time. So the easement that we have proposed is a payment of $6,000. That's pretty standard of what we've been paying you in the past and pretty standard across utility industry. Again, these transformers are gonna be located on a concrete pad. So we'll probably do some curb work. It'll be a continuous concrete pad that all five and three of them will sit on. We have the option to install some, some bullards just for additional protection. But that's kind of where, what, what our next step and then to keep moving forward with this project is, is we need to secure the easement. Otherwise, we have to kind of come up with a redesign or abandon the project altogether and leave it overhead. So questions on this part before we move on to the next part? And I don't know if you need two separate motions on the easement would maybe be the cleanest way to go about it.
I'll offer that and I have a question as well.
Second.
Thank you, Laurel and Al.
I think this is important to do, I think it's logical, I think it helps the look of our city. So thank you to Otter Tail Power and for your work on this, Nate. Are there any trees, some of the landscape areas that were pictured had trees in them? Are there any trees that are gonna be lost in this process in those parking lots?
No.
Okay.
In order to move the city forward, I think this needs to happen, so thank you.
Mr. Cundy, I like it. The only question I have, is there gonna be any disruption or interruption to any of the businesses? And if so, which ones, to the south of it, to the north of it? And if there is, how long do you anticipate that?
Yeah, great question, Mike. So when we are doing the excavation, we'll actually end up closing the alleyway. We plan to do that block by block and get our facilities in and do escap, or backfill as soon as we can. We'll try to leave it open to pedestrian traffic as much as we can. It won't affect the storefront, just the rear entrance of most of these businesses. We think that it's kind of some short-term pain for some long-term gain in this situation. As far as like the service cutover goes, we, just as we've done on the south side of Lincoln here, we work with those individual businesses and we either take the outage after hours to move them over to the new service. We, we, we try not to be as disruptive as we can. Each one is gonna be a little bit different. We are bringing new underground wires up to each building, each services entrance. So none of the overhead service lines will be running to these buildings anymore. It takes some time, possibly takes some investment on their part if they choose to do upgrades. We're not requiring anybody to do that. But we have engaged in some other contractors to help us out with that work to kind of speed up that process.
Yes, go ahead, Scott.
This is probably a question for Brian who's not here. But as far as you know, as you've done the research on this, the other utilities that would be in the alley already, apparently gas is already there.
Yep.
And I know that there's storm drains in the alleys in various places. But I believe the water and sewer is all out in Lincoln. So we don't have anything deeper than what you're gonna go, other than the storm drain, as I understand it right now in these two areas. Is that, does that sound right, Guy?
Right.
So the likelihood that this would have to get ripped up again anytime soon, I guess, is what I'm after. I'd like to avoid any of that.
Yeah, so I mean, great point. So the city does have some work, additional work beyond like, we'll just say the milling of the asphalt, the overlay that you guys would potentially look at doing. And Bill, you wanna just?
I'll just pipe in on that a little bit. So after we had this meeting, so even prior to the meeting that we had with Otter Tail Power, I know Troy Hoagie was in a meeting with you, right?
Yep.
From our engineering department? So after we met about this, then we talked with Troy. He's actually drawn up an estimate, you know, of this project for the alley from the city's perspective. And we may need to do some stormwater work, he said. So we're looking at that, we're trying to come up with all our costs to, to bring that together. So working with engineering on that. And then we'll also, we're looking at the parking lots in that area too, same thing. Troy put together an estimate of what would it cost for us to resurface those parking lots? And, you know, we wouldn't have to do them all, do we start with one and then, you know, prioritize? That'll all have to come back to you as a council, but we're working on that with engineering.
And just to be clear, the utility partners are only gonna either one pay, like a damage settlement to the city or partner with the city on the asphalt for the alleyway. We won't do any of the storm work or parking lots or anything else.
Yep, go ahead, Mark.
You indicated it was, the easement was a standard. Help me understand that. Is it by foot, is it by unit, is it?
Yeah, it, it's usually by square foot is what we pay now.
So if I said 12 grand, what would happen?
We would have to take that into consideration. I mean, yeah, yeah, good question, right? So at the end of the day, like we're a regulated utility. Any costs that we absorb essentially gets passed on to the rate.
I understand.
Right? So they say, oh, all right, we're gonna make a boatload of money on Otter Tail. And we could just say, well, the easement's too much money, we're gonna walk away from the project altogether.
No, and I'm, I'm joking more than that. I'm just trying to figure out where the 6,000 came from. If, there's gotta be a standard if this thing was eight blocks long.
I don't know the number right off the top of my head, but, I mean, we have a land rights department that kind of manages all that easement stuff. But again, every one of our transactions is reviewed by the Minnesota Public Utilities Commission, right? So they would say, well, if it doesn't pass the stink test, right, something's probably going on there. You know, we're asking for, I think, like a 30 by 24 easement is the largest one. If we're paying you 10 grand for that easement, man, either that has like brand-new asphalt in it or there's other, you know, aspects that would make that condition worth it versus just our standard easement payment per square foot.
More of an information for me, thanks, Nate.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for this easement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Can we bring this one to the consent agenda also on Monday? Thank you. Go ahead.
So I mentioned it was a two-part project. Lynn, if you'd advance the slide, please. Currently, there is still some municipal-owned and operated street lighting in these corridors and these parking lots. Back in 2019, we started an effort to replace a lot of the municipal lighting with OTP offered tariffs. Lighting at that time, due to a lot of these facilities reaching end of life, we got a majority of these replaced, especially the ones that we say had the most prudent end-of-life concerns at that time. So we think everything on Lincoln up to Union, south on Union, out on Pebble Lake Road and Vernon Avenue. And we've been doing lighting in the downtown projects. What we want to do here is continue on this project since everything will be excavated and opened up to replace this kind of area of municipal lighting that's still there, that's still outdated, still gonna reach its end of life at some point. We feel now is pretty, a pretty good opportune time to be able to do that. So what our proposal is, is we replace these fixtures with our 30-foot aluminum alloys. So if you drive down Kavor right now, north on Union, west on Lincoln, it's the 30-foot aluminum poles that have the LED 10 fixtures on there, you have the banner brackets, the Festoon lighting. That's kind of what we have scoped up right now. I believe the count is 35 of them, and I think I have a map in here. Yeah, this is hard to see, but each one of these little red dots is a light that goes in here. So this is replacing a lot of the current Muni-owned stuff. And this one gets us down to the bridge on Lincoln as well. So the only municipal lighting that would remain if you move forward with this proposal, go back up one, is gonna be the decorative ones on, on Lincoln. We're not touching any of that right now. So Lynn, if you would, please. So this is what you currently have. You can see that there's a screw-in like bus-type fuse in the base of these, a porcelain block. The state electrical inspector would just basically take your thing out of service if he saw this anymore. But you have these old steel standards, this is kind of what your parking lot look, light looks like. You have these concrete foundations, next slide, please. Your concrete foundations are actually starting to crumble and allow moisture in there. So those will be reaching end of life here pretty soon as well. Next slide, please. The other piece of this is you have a lot of corrosion on your mounting plates. These things aren't above grade, so the salt and everything else is eating away at these. And they're steel and they're not like a pre-corroded steel like you'd see some of our utility structures and have a treated base on them. So this'll reach end of life at some point. And I think actually this winter, we've had, I know, one or two of them just kind of fall over in high winds. So you'll also have these HPS fixtures, which stand for high-pressure sodium. It's that orange light, they're not the most efficient as far as lighting goes. Go ahead, Lynn. So again, just some of the benefits of why it makes sense to partner on these tariffs is they're low-cost, there's no upfront cost to the city on this. You get billed by a tariffed rate per fixture, per pole. The only time that rate changes is if we go in for a rate case in front of the Public Utilities Commission and they say, yep, you can raise your rate on that. It's not like we can just say, oh, we didn't make enough money on street lighting that next month, so we're gonna jack the rate up. Doesn't work that way. So the rates are very consistent, it's predictable, they're easy to budget for. And again, there's no large upfront cost to the city, you don't have to bond for it. There's no city maintenance involved in this. You don't have to locate the underground wires, you don't have to, car comes and hits it, you don't have to try to dispatch people after hours to clear it, you don't have to hire an electrician to fix it. We take care of all of that. You don't have to try to find a replacement fixture. We warehouse these things over in Wapatin. We have a bunch here actually in Fergus that we'll end up stocking. So it's, if one gets hit, we can be there pretty quickly to replace it. Some of the indirect benefits of this is really on reducing the city's liabilities. So you have the opportunity to probably approach your insurance company and say, hey, we have less electrical infrastructure that the city actually owns and is liable for. You might be in for some possible rate reductions there as well. Again, it's just kind of going back to that safety value, right? You saw the slide, the corrosion, you have some of the outdated wiring in here. It's really what we'll end up with is a lighting system that's up to day's code, that's protected, visually appealing. These have breakaway bases on it, so if a car does hit it, you have steel bolted to concrete right now. We have aluminum breakaway base. The pole is actually designed to fall away from the car rather than fall on the car with these breakaway bases. And everything's more lightweight and forgiving. Visually, there's no rust, there's no paint, there's no ongoing maintenance with that. You end up with the banner brackets, the Festoon lighting if you chose, choose to do that as well. So just a review of kind of what we're gonna be installing. We use these helical foundations, so we don't pour concrete anymore. It allows for pretty It allows for a pretty easy install. They're galvanized electro steel, so we don't have to worry about the rust component of that. We bring duct up through the, throw it up into the middle of it, so there's no exposed conductor. Go ahead Lynn. And this is what they are. We have these all over town right now. Go ahead. There's a difference between what you have right now with this HPS lighting. Here's what the LED lighting is. You can see there's a significant reduce, reduction of glare. Next slide please. If we put these in on parking lots and people are saying, oh, there's light shining in my windows, we, we do have what we call a light trespass shield. So we have the opportunity to kind of redirect that light. They work pretty good. So what's it cost? Right Mark? What's it cost? We're looking at about $1,000 each month to the city. So about 12 grand a year to do these 35 lights. It doesn't include what you're going to be saving by replacing the municipal lights. Because if you're not interested in going through this process, I'm not going to go through the work and count up and do the formula because these are energy-only right now. Also, to keep in mind, not only on this project, but our other project that we have the easement on, we pay property tax on every one of these facilities. It's about 1.47%. So anything we invest in here, you're, you're growing the tax base on. That's kind of a breakdown of what the, what the tariffs are, what the cost is going to be. You'll probably net out a little bit less with some of the savings on the municipal removals. So questions on the lighting project?
I'll offer a motion to move forward with this.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you Mark.
Nate, I appreciate Otter Tail Power. I always have. I've been in their trade area for many, many years. They're a good steward. This is a good deal. Declarification, you said 35 fixtures?
Yep, there'd be 35 poles and 35 light fixtures.
And you say about 1,000 a month.
That's what the tariff calculates out to.
Yep.
Yep.
Yes.
And I, I support Otter Tail as, as much as we can. I appreciate everything you guys do. Thank you very much.
And that 12,000 will be something we'll build in the 26 budget? Because that's really when it will-
Yep.
-take effect. Because they'll build it out this year and then it'll start.
Sorry, I skipped over that bullet point in the slide. But yeah, well, so kind of our next step here is we execute a, what we call light outing, outdoor lighting facilities contract. It's pretty standard. It's what we've used for every one of the lighting projects that we've done in town. It's approved by the Public Utilities Commission. So again, it's basically putting in the description of where the lights are going, what the light type is, the tariffed amount on there. You guys can sign it as a city. That would allow us to order the material. There is a pretty significant lead time on this material. We can get the foundations pretty quickly and do all the underground facility work during this construction season. As far as the standards go, it was likely won't show up until probably late fall. So you're billing one start until these are actually in service and completed, November, December, possibly into '26. So again, it would mostly impact the '26 budget wholly. And then just to kind of put things into perspective a little bit on like, if the city were to replace their own lighting structure, when we do these projects, we look at about a 35, or a 30-year payback. You would have to be able to source all this and construct it for around $350,000 versus what you're going to pay in tariffs to get that same amount of lifespan and payback period on it. And the last lighting project that the city did was 13 lights up at the Kirkbride Park, and it cost you about $250,000, and that was in 2005. So I don't think you're going to be able to do it cheaper on your own.
All right, thank you Nate.
Yep.
We have, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We will be adding this to the March 3rd agenda on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, we are going to go to the proposal for solar projects on municipal buildings. And here to make a request is Cedar Walters and Griffin Peck from West Central Initiative. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Griffin Peck, and I'm the Climate Resilience Officer with West Central Initiative. And starting last summer, I worked with Guy to look at some of the buildings here in Fergus Falls for the potential to add solar to them, because some of the incentives that are available right now make it a really good program. I also just want to shout out that Luke Nietzsche and Chris Walter here from Otter Tail Power. They came to support our proposal in front of the council this morning, so I just wanted to call them out as well. I'll start off. At a high level, I completed a building analysis for the new liquor store on the west side of town, as well as the community arena. At a high level, the liquor store on the west side consumes roughly 200,000 kilowatt-hours a year, costs the city roughly $25,000, of which $16,700 is related to the direct consumption of energy. The other charges are customer charges, demand charges, facility charges, other typical things on your energy bill that are related to the direct consumption of the energy. Also looking, I looked at the community arena, which consumes roughly 1.4 million kilowatt-hours a year, costs the city roughly $140,000, of which $74,500 is that energy charge. The next piece I completed is a rate analysis. So I looked at the liquor store's rates that they pay for electricity as well as the community arena. I'm going to skip over the details of the community arena rate analysis because essentially what we're proposing is that we put a solar array on the liquor store. So in the interest of time, I'm going to gloss over that and just focus on the liquor store rate analysis. When I, for the first, so I got bills from 2022 to 2024 for this, for the liquor store. And the initial set of bills that I got from 2023 and 2022 were on the large general service rate, which is a very different rate than the current rate, which is the general service rate. And so as you can see, prior to November of 2023, the liquor store was paying roughly 2, 2.5 cents per kilowatt-hour in the summer, and 2.9 cents per kilowatt-hour in the wintertime. And then the meat of the bill in that rate is in the demand charge. So in the summer, $13.99 per annual max kilowatt. And then in the winter, $11.25. So the average demand charges on those bills with the large general service were roughly $973 per month. Looking at the current rate, which started in December of 2023 and has held since then, you pay roughly 4.6 cents a kilowatt-hour in five, in the summer, and 5.2 cents a kilowatt-hour in the wintertime. But your demand charges are greatly decreased, which is why there was some cost savings in the last couple of years with the liquor store, primarily because of that change in rate. And so what I did is I took that current rate and I looked at the summer and winter charges as well as the associated energy adjustments, which are typically 1.5 cents to 3.9 cents, and cover a large variety of things that I'm sure Otter Tail could speak to. And tried to calculate an average rate for the building, which is how we calculated the cash flow analysis for a potential solar array. And so in the liquor store, you can see that the average rate with energy adjustments is 7.5 cents per kilowatt-hour. And again, I said I would skip over it, but I'll just, at, at the very bottom of the rate analysis for the community arena, you can see that the average rate was 5.5 cents per kilowatt-hour. And that's essentially why it makes more sense for this first array to put it at the liquor store, because the energy that you consume onsite at the liquor store has a higher value, and so it pays off the solar array quicker. But as you'll see in a second, that isn't as important for these arrays, the payoffs. I'm going to move on to the solar analysis. And so the first one is for, that we're looking at here is for the liquor store. The normal text is the, what we currently expect. And then the alternate text is if the energy community's credit goes away. And I can explain a little bit more about that. But at a high level, what we're looking at is a 50-kilowatt solar array on the DC side with 40-kilowatt AC output. It'll generate roughly 55,000 kilowatt-hours per year. The city's upfront total cost for the array would be $137,500. But then there's a lot of incentives available, as I talked about. And so the first and primary incentive is the Otter Tail POP rebate. The POP program is the publicly-owned properties, on publicly-owned properties solar program, which allows, essentially gives an incentive to cities to install solar on their public buildings. This incentive is $1,750 per kilowatt of the AC nameplate, nameplate capacity. So at the 40-kilowatt nameplate capacity, we're looking at a $70,000 incentive, a rebate. Then the other pieces of the incentive stack are tax credits that are available to the city through the direct pay program, which allows non-taxable entities to take advantage of these tax credits that previously were not available to them. And so the primary one again is a 30% base credit, which for this project would be $41,250. Then there's an additional 10% credit that we plan to go after through our RFP, called the Made in America Credit, which is 10% for projects that use made-in-America steel and solar panels in their project design. And then finally, there's this 10% energy communities bonus. And this bonus is for communities that fall under a wide variety of different indicators, one of which being the communities that have a closed coal-burning power plant, which since the Hoot Lake power plant has been closed, that qualifies the city of Fergus Falls. And so as you can see, right, with all these incentives, we're looking at getting up to 100% of the project costs back within six to 18 months of the initial installation. And so, right, this is a really amazing opportunity for the city because if we're able to get that energy community credit, that would mean that this project would be cash flow positive on day one. In all my short few years of working in this space and all the different solar analysis that I've done for every other city, no other city is getting cash flow positive on day one because no other city has the set of attributes that allow the incentives to stack to cover 100% of that upfront cost. So this is a really great opportunity. The annual energy savings will be $4,400. And again, that starts on day one. And there will be a lifetime savings over the cost of 30 years of $149,565. I just want to talk a little bit about the alternative, that we don't get the energy community bonus. The reason I say that there's a possibility that that one may not be around is that it's linked to Justice 40 initiatives, which have been, we've seen getting rolled back at the federal level. And so that's one that we're, you know, at West Central Initiative and our colleagues and other partners, we're less sure about. But in terms of the other credits, the Made in America Credit, the base credit, we feel very confident about. We're just not as sure on that energy community one since it is tied to some of the programs that are getting rolled back at the federal level. But again, even if that one went away, you'd still get $125,000 in incentives on this $137,000 project. You'd have $12,500 balance. And then from the energy savings, it would only take two years and 10 months to recoup that $12,500 difference. And there would still be a lifetime savings of $137,065. Again, I'm going to gloss over the community arena analysis. And on the fourth page, you can see the liquor store solar project cash flow details. So that shows how the project cash flows over time. And so there are two, on the far left, there are two columns. There are the export payments and the direct electric bill savings. Those are basically are the two buckets that energy can flow into when you have a solar array. The electric bill savings is referring to solar that is produced onsite and consumed onsite, which then translates to that 7.5 cents that we calculated, that's, that savings. And then the export payment is when you produce solar onsite and there isn't the demand onsite to consume it onsite. And so it's exported offsite, for which in Otter Tail Power, for solar arrays that are under 40 kilowatts, they're required to pay the retail rate, which is 8.3 cents per kilowatt-hour. And so with that, that's how we calculate the savings over time. And then we get that cash flow over on the far right, as well as the cumulative return on investment. And I modeled it with both the energy community bonus and without the energy community bonus. Then the page after that shows the detail of how I get those numbers, of how I figure out whether it's getting consumed onsite or exported offsite, as well as accounting for some of the degradation in the panels and their production over time, as well as increases in the cost of electricity over time. So we're looking at, you know, in the first column that has the module rating. So these modules, the solar panels, come with a 25-year production guarantee to 85% of their initial generation capacity. I extended that out to 30 years using the same level of degradation so that on year 30, they'll produce roughly 82.6% of their initial capacity. And then also, the cost of energy is set to a 1.5% year-over-year escalator rate. And that is a conservative escalation rate. Other people use a 3% rate. I wanted to, you know, be as conservative in my estimates as possible. And yeah, that's, so that's how we figured that out. And at the liquor store on the west side, that building has a lot of demand. And so it's likely that that building is going to consume almost all of the energy that it produces onsite. I'm going to pause there for questions. There is an FAQ at the end of this document though. So I'll pause there. Thank you.
We get a motion on the floor to recommendation to the council to participate in an RFP process.
I'll offer that.
Thank you Scott. Do we have a second? We do not have a second.
Can we have a motion for more discussion or is there any other options at this point? Or to delay the RFP for today?
I can offer some additional details about the RFP process and what, what I'm asking, rather. So what I'm asking is that you agree to let me add these details to a joint RFP that we've developed with Lakes Region Service Cooperative. This RFP will include cities from across the region that are participating in this cohort. So as of now, we already have five other cities that are signed on to this RFP. What we will do is we'll take this RFP out for bids and get, get bids from different solar contractors, take the bids back and choose a bid. And then we would come back to you in April or May of this year to seek final approval. So I'm not asking for a yes on solar today. All I'm asking for is a yes that we add these details to a bid so that you guys can get a proposal from a contractor. And then at that point, you would have the opportunity to say yes or no.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do we have a second on this motion?
You know what, I'm, I'm going to give it a second Laura, but I'm going to give it a second just so we give other individuals like Jim Fish, Scott Rachels, our fellow colleagues here, a chance to look at this and, and do this. But this is, this is a long way from done in my mind. So if you, if you say you're bringing it back just for RFP and just to look at it, and we're not making a decision on solar today, that's why I made the second motion. Because I think we, we need to discuss it a little bit and, but I appreciate your knowledge. I mean, it's, it's unbelievable, your knowledge of it, with it. Question I have is, is who else have you done this with? And, and what's your track record of doing this with buildings and cities and different things like this?
So my background is, prior to working with West Central Initiative, I worked with the city of Morris for two years as their sustainability project coordinator and worked on the final commissioning and operations of solar arrays on their city buildings. They have four solar arrays on their buildings, one on their city hall, community center, library, and liquor store. And so I developed my analysis chops and rate, you know, all of the things that I presented to you today in that, in that position. In terms of other cities that we're currently working with, right now is, in terms of other studies I've approved going onto the RFP, we have Battle Lake, Fergus, Ashby, New York Mills, as well as Pelican Rapids. And then we're actually going and presenting in Param tonight as well. So there are, there's broad participation across the region. And again, as I said, no, none of the other cities that are participating have as good as a financial outlook, project, financial terms, as this project, so.
And I appreciate your background. You're very knowledgeable. I couldn't even debate you for one second. The, the question I have is, how many of these has West Central Initiative completed in the last 12 months, this project? So we could, what I look at, when I look at it from a business standpoint, I want to be able to go out and talk to who has this. I want to be able to sit down and say, hey, was this what it really was? Did you get the energy consumption that you wanted? Has this worked out? Is this something that the city of Fergus Falls and the constituents should go down this route or not? So I guess I'm looking more for, what's the track record and can we talk to them? Or has our city staff already contacted them and can give us information if, you know?
Yeah, so this is the first year of the West Central Initiative solar cohort. So we do not have installed projects as part of the West Central Initiative work yet. I would say that if you're interested in speaking to someone who has- Um, I would say that if you're interested in speaking to someone who has experience with solar, talk to the city of Morris. Um, when I was working there, for example, we had solar on the city hall, small array, twenty kilowatts, uh, but it produced a hundred percent of the energy we consumed in that building. And so while I was an employee there and while I was analyzing bills there, there was about twelve months at the end of my time in Morris where we did not pay a single cent on that building because it was producing all of the energy it was consuming. And so in that sense, uh, I would say it's a a good opportunity, um, and if you have further questions, I'd, you know, encourage you to reach out to Rebecca Shrupp, the city manager in Morris, um, or Kevin Wallers, the mayor. Uh, I'm sure that they would be happy to speak with you about that.
Your honor?
Yes.
Um, couple of things. Uh, when you go out for RFP, will you be looking at just the liquor store, or will you be looking at the community arena as well? And then I have a follow-up question when you answer that.
So ideally, we would just do one building. We would put it, we would choose to do the liquor store, choose to do the community arena. Um, in the interest of time this morning, I wanted to keep it short, um, but essentially at the community arena, since it has a really high demand and since its base rate is at five cents, a solar array installed there, all the, you know, fifty-five thousand kilowatt hours a year would be valued at five cents, whereas at the liquor store, they're valued at seven and a half cents. So just from that basis, it would, I would say it would make more sense, you'd have long, more long-term financial prosperity from the liquor store than the um other.
The reason I'm asking on the arena is we have multiple user groups that pay an hourly rate for the for the arena. One of them is the city, school district, skating club, curling, hockey, I think, I mean, there's a bunch that pay there. Their costs are high. That that cooler is an expensive thing to run over there.
Yep.
Um, and there, we have community groups that are trying to figure out how to cover those costs as they go up. Could a larger array be done at the arena to be able to reduce those user group costs, including the city's costs, to cover more than four thousand dollars a year there? To me, we would have long-term benefit to the city and to our user groups, ourselves included, to look at a large array at the arena.
Absolutely. So that is actually something I performed when I was doing my analysis. Um, so I modeled a forty kilowatt solar array, a four hundred and fifty kilowatt solar array, which is the roof space, and a one point two megawatt solar array, which is the parking lot area. Um, the one point two megawatt array, which is the size of the entire parking lot, that's the size that you need to reach to get a hundred percent of the energy covered. Um, and we'd be looking at a uh, you know, several million dollar project. The other primary thing of why we aren't going bigger with these is that the POP solar incentive matches out at that forty kilowatts. So if you install a forty, a fifty kilowatt DC, forty kilowatt AC array, you get seventy thousand dollars. If you install a one point two megawatt array, you can only get the POP for that other piece, and the other pieces, when you install a larger solar array, you don't get that eight point three cents when you export to the grid, it's four point five cents because of the net metering laws in Minnesota. So there, that is something that I explored. Um, under the four hundred and fifty meg uh kilowatt array, which would be the size of the roof, that covers roughly forty-five percent of the building's annual consumption. Uh, and because of the Otter Tail Power incentive having less of an impact, it's about a sixteen year payoff. There's still a net, god, one point three million dollar savings for the city over that uh remaining fourteen years. Um, but, you know, just in terms of the easiest, most like cash flow friendly project, that's why I kind of presented the liquor store. It's definitely possible to consider solar out there. The other, the things I think would, I'd be more interested in is since I performed a rate analysis on the community arena, I'd be more interested in like seeing how we could look at its current rate structure to see if there's a way to, just by changing the rates and changing how the building operates, like the ru- uh equipment, schedule runtimes, how we could potentially just save money just by editing that. Um, so I think there's opportunities there, but didn't make the most sense for solar. Thank you.
Scott?
Uh, the question I would have is, you mentioned this one portion that is subject to federal rollbacks as far as with funding availability. The bigger pieces of it is that POP rebate you talked about, and to what degree is that subject to any federal or other rollback? Or is that a pretty much a locked-in guaranteed, we know it's gonna be there, or do we get halfway down this thing and then, oh, that gets pulled too? That would be a concern.
I would invite my friends from Otter Tail to maybe speak to that.
Thank you, Scott, for raising that. I agree.
Morning, council. Brandon Johnson, Otter Tail Power. Uh, Otter Tail Files Programs in three-year increments, we call it a triennial, that we are in the first year of our triennial, so the POP rebate would be available for this year and and likely the next two years. Where the only, where it could potentially change the POP rebate is meant to help Otter Tail meet some small-scale solar energy standards, and that's set by the Public Utilities Commission, so Otter Tail has to have a certain percentage of our energy base coming from small-scale solar. That's why that forty KW is a really important word. Should should Otter Tail meet our our goal or achieve achieve our percentage there, the program might roll back, but I don't, it it's not, we're not on pace to do that before this would complete.
Thank you.
Thank you. Laura? All right, yes.
Wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
Um, I know Kevin Wallers, I'll give him a shout. Were they successful in getting the IRS rebates?
So the city of Morris chose to install their panels before the IRS rebates had been passed into law. So they chose to do this without a significant piece of this, they only used the POP rebate, and so the city of Morris is on a twelve-year payoff for their solar arrays, they have not paid off their solar yet, um, because that incentive was not available when they installed their solar.
Thank you.
But they chose to install it, even with the, just the POP rebate because of the long-term savings.
I'm gonna ask, um, it might be outside of your uh wheelhouse, uh, but more on the construction side.
Yeah.
Um, we're gonna put panels up on a roof. How are they, how are they fixed to the roof?
Yeah, so at the West Liquor Store, you have a flat roof, so it would be a flat-roof ballasted array, so there would be nothing that would actually puncture the membrane of the roof itself. It is a steel racking system that the panels are fixed to, and then cement blocks are placed on top of that, and that's how it sits on the roof. Um, speaking from personal experience while working for the city of Morris, the city hall and library arrays are those ballasted arrays that don't puncture the roof lining. Um, and those were installed by the time we had the May twenty-twenty-two windstorm. We had ninety-five mile an hour winds come through our community and not one of those panels moved. So, yes, it sounds weird that it's just sitting there, but the weight of it keeps, is what keeps it on the roof. And it's very close to the roof, so there's not like room for like wind to get in there, really, they're like this, you know, tilted, so.
How old is the roof on the?
That's with, yep.
How old is the roof on the liquor store?
It's the original roof.
Pardon?
Original roof, so eighteen years old.
Trying to remember, what year did we open?
But it's a metal standing ceiling roof.
So we don't have a roof replacement in the next twenty-five years, kind of a situation?
Yeah. It's not a, it's not a rubber roof, it's a vinyl, or it's a steel roof?
Yeah, steel standing ceiling.
What's the maintenance cost on the panels?
So maintenance and insurance costs for panels and arrays are typically part of what the contractor proposes in an RFP. So when I was working for the city of Morris, uh, it was about fifteen hundred dollars a year for the insurance and maintenance costs. Um, and so again, right, forty-four hundred minus fifteen hundred, it's still three thousand dollar net savings. Um, you know, part of why we're doing this is, you know, in the city of Fergus Falls, three thousand dollars of net savings isn't, isn't that much, right? I recognize that. Um, but for a city of Fergus, right, they're gonna save five thousand dollars by putting solar in their community center, that's a really big savings for them. Um, and so, you know, this solar doesn't have as big of an impact in Fergus as in other communities, but we wanted to make sure that they were, you know, included in this process. Um, and so, sorry, what was your initial question?
Yes, I, you you said we were gonna save forty-five hundred dollars, forty-four hundred bucks.
Yep.
But are you now saying it's less than fifteen hundred?
Insurance, so insurance and maintenance costs would be around fifteen hundred dollars less. Again, that's my estimate from what I've seen. Um, it could be less than that. Typically, the, there's uh, the maintenance costs are zero for the first ten years because there's a workman's warranty.
They're new, yep.
And so that's typically what you're looking at is probably five hundred dollars for insurance for the first ten years, or a thousand dollars for insurance for the first ten years, and then that added five hundred dollars of yearly maintenance, and that maintenance is just ensuring that the wiring connections are still good, making sure that there's not a ton of dirt on the panels, and inspecting the inverters, but, you know, there's not moving parts like a traditional gas engine.
Correct.
So you're not, it's not the same level of maintenance as we.
So this insurance would be the physical damage, hail?
Yep.
Yep. So that doesn't go on the city policy, it it's on the, on the contractor?
Yep.
What's the demo cost at the end of the life?
So, right, the, this array, this, what we've modeled, here's a thirty-year lifespan. At the end of thirty years, they're not dead, right? As my analysis showed, they're still producing eighty percent of their initial capacity. There are panels that were installed in the nineties in California and Japan that are still operating today, and that's from technology from the early nineties, late eighties. And so I expect that these panels will last far beyond thirty years. Um, in terms of the the disposal costs, I don't have a firm number on that, that's something we can get from the contractor in the RFP. Um, but at a hi- a high level, you know, there are solar recyclers in the US that buy used solar panels at a low cost to, um, you know, recycle them to pull out the, you know, useful parts. Essentially, a solar panel is a glass sandwich with silicone and some copper in the middle and wiring with, you know, a steel casing on the outside. So it is highly recyclable, and so there are now several companies in the US that are recycling solar panels. So that's the primary disposition method.
The intent of my questions are brought on by a constituent who's asked me these questions.
Absolutely.
I appreciate your honesty and your knowledge. Uh, we're look, I'm just trying to find out, and he is trying to find out, what the real net savings is, you know, after all these little surprises, if you will, that are not present. So even at three thousand, that's, that's, it works. So I I appreciate the additional information. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. This item will be added to the March third agenda, consent agenda, okay? Okay? And then our last item of business today is the proposal for some requested technology updates in the city council chambers, and our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth, is gonna review this proposal with us.
Yeah, thank you, your honor, members. Thanks for shuffling out of respect for people's timelines here. Um, just real quickly, as as many of you know, there's been concerns or complaints that have been raised over time about the ability to hear within this room, not only if you're kind of seated in the audience or at the dais, but then also as it pertains to broadcasting on YouTube or Peg Access as well. And so with that information, we talked to Bloom, which is a technology contractor. They are formerly known as Tierney, they're the folks who designed the technology in this room. They also did the uh event center technology at the Bigwood, and the reason being is they're uh the vendor that's on the state bid contract, so it really assures competitive pricing and and allows us to bypass having to prepare specs and create RFPs and things like that. Based on the work with Bloom, our IT director, Dan Knudsen, walked through our system and did an assessment of that. And one of the things that I think we should all be reassured of is that the microphones are really in good working order. Now, um, they made it very clear that in order for them to work, they have to be, you know, right in front of somebody's mouth. We pick on Rolf a lot where he has his off to the side. Um, they're not designed to pick up sound that's, you know, eight to twelve inches left or right. Um, they're really designed to be right here to minimize kind of distractions that are happening around. So, uh, just a friendly reminder that, uh, keep those close, and really, that's not something that needs to be addressed in relation to this issue. The bigger issue that we found is the output in the room. And so what we're looking at doing for improvement is uh ten new ceiling speakers, these would be six and a half inch speakers. Seven of those ten will replace the existing speakers in the room. You can see there's one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven. These are um four-inch speakers today, those would be replaced with six and a half inch speakers. So not only are they gonna be bigger, but the new technology, um, since these have been installed, will provide for greater output, so we'll get better coverage in the room. The other three speakers uh will be new speakers, and they will be located closer to you all at the dais. So, um, I don't know exactly what panels they would be in, but but the intent is up here, so if one of your fellow members is speaking, that sound is coming directly down. Right now, it's being put through these speakers here, or you have to be able to hear, you know, with your, with your own ears as it comes out of their mouth, not necessarily through the microphone system. So the intent is to improve sound quality for everybody, and uh that's kind of what we're looking at doing. The cost of these improvements is just shy of eighty-four hundred dollars. Again, that's coming from the state bid list. Um, Dan Knudsen and working with uh Bloom is recommending we proceed with that, he thinks that's a a viable option and a fair price. That money would come out of our general government buildings budget, there is sufficient money in that budget to proceed with this project. The other thing that was explored as part of this process, and this is a conversation that's happened in the past as well, was um having a document camera that was installed in the room, and essentially what that is, is you could set a piece of paper on that document camera, which would then be projected onto the screens. We don't have the ability to do that now. I know uh the county commission uses that technology at the Government Services Center, and it is certainly, you know, nice to have, but we felt as staff that we wouldn't utilize that enough to justify the cost. And then quite frankly, there's just physical space that that takes up, so whether it would be housed on this staff table, or even, you know, in in Lynn's area, which is already crowded enough, there's really not a great location for that to happen with the frequency in which we use this meeting space beyond even council meetings. So, um, that was quoted at just over seventy-six hundred dollars, and again, we're not recommending that we proceed with that at this time. The council can certainly uh go in that direction if they wish to, but from staff's perspective, that is not uh necessary. One other just quick comment, uh, Bloom said they're, they're pretty available now, but if we delay this too far, um, and and that's not to try to rush anything, but they work a lot in school districts, and they said once the school year ends, there's a mad dash to get those improvements done in the three months that school's out. So if you delay too long, you're probably looking at kind of after summer break before the schedule eases up again. So the other thing I'll mention, I had, uh, I've had good conversations with Councilmember Layton, the other thing that we're gonna replace, and and we don't need to do it through a contract because it's really just a straightforward thing, is is actually this microphone stand here. There's been comments that if anybody, and I'm six feet tall for reference, if I stand up straight, it's pretty hard to get close, and obviously, we have people that are much taller than me from time to time, and so, um, getting a different microphone arm so people have the ability to actually speak into this microphone, see the difference there, um, as the council is hearing presentations from the public, we're gonna just do that. Um, Dan has located one, it's, I think, twenty-five dollars or less, um, and we'll just get that installed. So we are looking at ways to to make it a more user-friendly experience for all of you, but also the public, and that's kind of, that's kind of where we landed. So recommendation is to proceed with the speaker replacements and improvements in the amount, in the amount of eight thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars and ten cents from that state bid, and we have sufficient um monies to proceed with that if the council wishes.
Thank you, Andrew. Do we have a motion to bring this item to council?
I'll make a motion and thank you for working with me.
Do we have a second?
You know, I'll second it. Um, Andrew, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Um, you know, I appreciate the work you put into this and what you're telling us we're getting. Have you spent any time getting a list from Bloom, or talking to other administrators, or talking to other locations that have something similar to what we're getting, and are we getting, are they happy with it? Are we getting enough for what our money's worth, or do we need to upgrade, or have you done any of that, or does that happen?
Yeah, and maybe I'll look to Bill, um, he was out last week. I I haven't been the direct contact with Bloom on this, our IT department has, and I'm presenting it on their behalf, so I haven't had those conversations. I know they were here in the room, were in their view, present, I I think I was out of town. Um, and they created this system certainly in other places.
It's not that long, maybe four years ago, they did a complete replacement of everything. Um, it's just the speaker sizes now, they're just like a little bigger and a little more to accommodate the needs of the rat forward by the council and community.
Can you talk into your mic, please?
I am.
Your honor, one question, a couple of questions.
Okay.
Um, I've been contacted by four people that watched online since the last meeting, and I've kind of tracked that over the course of the last, since I came on in January, and I think I've had nine people reach out to me in that time. I understand we have issues in this room, and I agree with them as a former member that sat out there. Um, I am concerned, I get the mics are Um, I am concerned, I get the mics are good. Some of the feedback I've received is it's hard to hear people talk staff from the staff table online. I don't know if we're addressing that. The mic stand was on my list, so thank you, Councilmember Layton, for addressing that. Um, one other comment was, could one of the old speakers be used in the overflow space? I understand that would have to have, be able to be turned off for closed meetings, but there are times when we have a lot of people here. Could we repurpose one out to the overflow space? Possibly. I don't know what that would cost. Um, and then also, is there any way to have, Rolf is the one that seems to come up the most often as people can't hear. Is there any way to change how his is mounted so it is easier? Or is there a way to have someone in the room that's got headset on that can hear, you know, what's going on online? Because the online, I would encourage our council members before we vote on this on Monday to listen to a meeting online. I did do that. It is hard to hear for people online. Um, one other comment I have is, is Jim, I think it's Jim from Peg Access runs this equipment. Has he been part of this process or could Peg Access offer us any advice as they are the ones broadcasting?
All of those, your honor, Councilmember Kildee, those are all great questions, which I'll have to work with IT on. I, I don't know the functionality of extending that out into the, into the, um, the lobby or the overflow space. Um, I believe Peg Access was involved in, um, the creation of this system, cameras. Uh, so we redid all the cameras, all of the technology over here by Lynn, which included the screens. And I don't know if, was it speakers at the time? I don't recall. Um, but that was, I heard, her timeline maybe is a little generous. It was maybe five years ago or so. Like, time is flying by. And I want to say it was pre-COVID because the screens and stuff were in place prior to that. So a few years back, um, and, and Peg Access certainly was involved in that. And, and I think there was improvements, um, with that technology, certainly the cameras and some of that. Um, I don't believe, um, Dan communicated with Peg Access related to like this, this specific project with speakers, because it probably doesn't impact their programming. But, um, I couldn't speak to how they could improve sound quality on their end or, or the output of.
I guess my thought is just have communication, because if we're doing something, it makes sense to make sure that what our online product is, it's better to do it all at once if there is an issue there.
Yeah, and, um, there's nothing driving this other than just wanting to be receptive and responsive to comments that we've received. So if we want to take a more holistic look at this, um, we're certainly happy to do that. It's just, you can get, when, when you're in this technology space, as you all know, you can start seeing big dollars quickly. And that was, you know, that was the thought process here, is this is a relatively affordable option to make the improvements quickly for the people in the room. Um, but we're happy to take a more global or holistic look at this and, and, uh, and diagnose all those things. Trouble is, yeah, at the end of the day, um, you know, there's probably no guarantees on like YouTube quality because that's, that's impacted by, um, many things that we have happening here and, and internet, you know, issues. And the end experience could be different for every user based on how they're accessing that. And I, I don't know, um, the technology that Peg Access utilizes, if, if improvements in this room would change the output, you know, from their, their studio or their side of things either. But if that's the directive that the council wants to, to see, we'll, uh, we'll do a more global dive into this with Peg Access and, uh, put something together and come back with that.
Is there a mic at this table?
Yeah, so that one right in front of Bill there, and then those two are mics as well. Um, again, you got to be fairly close to them, and they're not, those mics aren't as efficient as the ones that, that I'm speaking into and that you guys are speaking into. If the concern is the staff table, then I think it's, it's pretty, pretty easy solution is that we get up from the table and, and approach the, um, you know, the podium to speak. I think we all are certainly capable and, and able to do that and, um, happy to do that. So that, that we can overcome. Um, but, you know, some of the global issues related to video quality output, YouTube, I'm certainly, uh, would have to, to go back to IT and let them do further diagnosis on that.
Great.
Laura, I appreciate the time that Andrew spent on this and Dan. I do understand that this is going to go to a two-channel now, so online, rather than it just being a, a left, it's going to be a right and left, I believe. And I also indicated, you know, I have difficulty even with the assistance to hear Lynn as well as the desk. But I think it's also important for the public to know that there are other services in this facility that can help you. This repeater is, is remarkable. And in addition to that, if you have smart hearing aids, uh, there's a loop that's available to public. So even if the, if, if you will, the speakers come in here, I think we need to do a better job to educate the public that come in, that, you know, if you're having trouble hearing, uh, it's, there are some technologies that are hiding here.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, Councilmember Layton, your honor. That is exactly right. We do have a few units available, um, and we can accommodate to an extent. Unfortunately, a lot of times that requires kind of pre-notice, right? We need to know somebody's going to be here so we can have the IT staff here to, to help with that, um, or to have the units available. And, and so it's not the perfect solution, but that does exist and, and those, I'm glad to hear that's, that's improved things for you.
This is night and day.
Good.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, um, to bring this item to the March 3rd council. This is the speaker replacement and improvements.
Is it just speaker or are we looking, and we're just walking from the document one, correct?
That was correct. That was the recommendation was to.[1691.41]